Okay, we're broadcasting.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, we need to notice first, I'm sorry, do we need that?
Sure.
What do we do first, the notice or the flag salute?
The notice.
All right, I'm sorry, do the notice, I'm out of line.
No problem. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, May 19, 2020. The time is now 7:00 PM. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the November 28, 2019, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent a further spread of COVID-19 pandemic, the public meaning for the remainder of the 2020 have been changed to Zoom webinar teleconference meeting until further notice. The public will be able to listen to the Board of Commissioners' meeting and participate during the designated public common portion of the meeting by utilizing access through a URL link or dial-in numbers provided on the township website. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Tucci.
Here. All we can all please, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. 7:03.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have 40 Commissioner meeting minutes for May 5, 2020. I need a motion.
Move the minutes.
Move it.
Get a motion, second.
I need a second. Commissioner.
Second, please.
Commissioner Kelly.
Abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
I'm not.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Thank you.
Mayor Tucci.
Do we have any communications?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I believe we do not have any proclamations. Reports, please. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a report for the Revenue and Finance Department in code for the month of April 2020.
Thank you. Commissioner Scarpelli.
I have various reports, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bills, please.
Bill is for May 19, 2020. Department totals, Public Affairs, $105,346,021. Revenue and Finance, $2,707,447.34. Public Safety, $33,908.74. Public Works, $64,939.54. Parks and Public Property, $63,199.58. Water Utility, $9,101.38. Payroll for regular payroll total is $779,494.32. Overtime payroll, $18,434.53. COVID-19 overtime payroll total, $33,372.90. Total payroll, $831,301.75 for a grand total of $3,815,254.54. Need a motion?
Move the bills.
A motion, please.
Move the bills.
Commissioner Kelly.
We need a second.
I second it.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner Kelly.
Abstain.
I didn't hear Commissioner Kelly abstain, okay. Commissioner Evans.
Abstain.
I said hi.
We have a little delay. Commissioner Patraco.
I said hi already.
Okay.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Thank you. If public comment on agenda items only, please. Thank you. Public comment on agenda items only.
Do we have anything, Alan? Do we have anybody waiting? Would you like me to read the statement?
Read the statement, please, just to give them the chance to log on.
Please.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners, please state your name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board of Commissioners, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
There are no persons with their hands up, Commissioner or Mayor.
Okay, and moving right along, Board of Commissioners announcements?
No one's requested.
Yes. I think we're having a problem with the delay here. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
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 We can hear.
Okay, Board of Commissioners announcements, Commissioners? No one else? I have a few. First announcement is, due to the restrictions imposed by the Governor through executive order, we are unable to hold our Memorial Day Parade celebration this year, so the parade is canceled. However, the Veterans Council and the Nutley Clergy will be visiting all of our memorials and holding a ceremony with 10 people or less, instituting social distancing. So all of the Commissioners have, in fact, been invited to that, and we will get final details and distribute those. As part of ongoing conversations with Commissioners and other folks in our community, there's a couple of committees I'm thinking about establishing. One is a small business community, and I had a conversation with Commissioner Evans about this to see how we can assist our small businesses, because many of them, because of the restrictions that are imposed, all right, are feeling severe financial hardship. So it may be a good idea for us to get together. We'll form a committee and see how we can help them. We'll get input from them and move forward in that regard. Earlier today, at the reorganization meeting, Commissioner Patraco mentioned the school expansion issue that we have. That's another committee that I'm thinking about establishing, all right, with the respective Commissioners that want to serve on that. Obviously, I know the two of you have interest in these two areas, so we can begin dialogue with the Board of Education, all right, and see how we can get to a place that's affordable, that gives our students the facilities that are required. And that's all I have for announcements. Anyone else? Seeing none, I see we have no ordinance introductions this evening. We have no ordinances on second reading. So we'll move into resolutions. Commissioner Kelly has none this evening. Commissioner Evans, would you like to read your resolution?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. I have one resolution, and it's linked to our budget. It's a certification of our compliance with the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission Enforcement Guidance in Consideration of Arresting, Prejudice, and Record Unemployment Decisions. We do have a new hire freeze in place right now. However, as part of the budget, we are required to move on this resolution. And I would love to read it, and I'm working on trying to find it in my packet, but you have the gist of it. I know, and Lenny, I know it's here. I just haven't found it yet.
Maybe the first one?
Mine was stuck to my bills list.
Yeah, mine was stuck to my bill list. Whereas NJSA 48:4-5, as amended by PL 217C 183, requires the governing body of each municipality and county to certify that their local units' hiring practices comply with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission Enforcement Guidance on the Consideration of Prejudice, Prejudice and Records in Employment Decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, as amended, 42 U.S. League 2000, at Ask, April 25, 2012, before submitting its approved annual budget to the Division of Local Governmental Services in the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. And whereas the members of the governing body have finalized themselves, familiarized themselves with the contents of the above referenced enforcement guidance and with their local hiring practices as they pertain to the consideration of individuals' criminal history as evidenced by the group's affidavit form of the governing body of the past year, too. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners. The Township of Nutley hereby states that it has complied with NJSA 48:4-5, as amended by PL 217C 183, by certifying that the local units' hiring practices comply with the above referenced enforcement guidance and hereby directs the clerk to cause to be maintained and available for inspection. It should have my copy of this resolution and the required affidavit to show evidence of set compliance. So move.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Commissioner here on mute.
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patraco.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a resolution authorizing the Township of Nutley Office of Emergency Management to accept funds from a sub-brand awarded the federal fiscal year 2019 of Emergency Management Agency Assistant Program Funding and for the Chief Financial Officer of the Township of Nutley to amend the budget and certify the availability of the funds instead of matching grant, or I believe $10,000. I move the resolution as written.
Second.
Need a second? Commissioner Kelly.
Second. Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
It's lacking. Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Thank you. Commissioner Scarpelli.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, Essex, New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for seal bids for Weatherspoon Street Roadway Improvement Project, Hancock's Avenue to Tappan Vale Avenue, the Township of Nutley, to receive on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Commission Chambers, Township Paul, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, 07110 on Wednesday, June 10, 2020, at 11:00 AM prevailing time, which time they will be open to red. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Abstain.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
This is a resolution, this is to support a safety study for the compressor station that wants to be built in Roseland and pump high-pressure gas, which will pump through our gas lines. I'll read it by title. Resolution Supporting Safety Study to Evaluate the Dangers of an Expanded Roseland Compressor Station and a 60-year-old pipeline coming from Roseland and running through the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Need a second? Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
What is happening?
Whereas on May 10, 2010, pursuant to NJSA 4858351, Cable Vision of Oakland LLC, with offices at 40 Potash Road, Oakland, New Jersey, providing notice to the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities of its intent to convert its municipal consent franchise in the Township of Nutley to a system-wide franchise. And conversation was memorialized by the BPU in accordance with Order of Amendment dated Jan 21, 2010. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 485A1, the BPU issued a renewal of the Cable Vision Systemwide Franchise effective March 28, 2016. Granted Cable Vision authority to operate Cable Vision stations within the jurisdiction set forth in its application, including the township. Whereas Cable Vision is undertaking the upgrade of its cable television system to a fully fiber-to-home system, which require the installation of three remote optical eye terminals and associated equipment within the municipal right-of-way located in the township. Whereas the Mayor and the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley are in possession of a request from Cable Vision to install the rope and associated equipment at the following locations within the municipal right-of-way. Grant Avenue adjacent to Block 6702, Lot 19. Church Street adjacent to Block 5900, Lot 1. Hancock's Avenue adjacent to Block 9305, Lot 7. Whereas Cable Vision is authorized to enforce that role in the municipal right-of-way subject to applicable municipal permitting pursuant to its right granted under the state cable law NJSA 45A-1 and under federal cable law 47 USA Section 521. Whereas Cable Vision submitted construction permits, building subcode and electrical subcode applications, and Township Code Enforcement Officer has said recommends that such authorization by the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for the installation of incorporated equipment be granted to Cable Vision for the locations listed above. Now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, New Jersey, in the extent permitted by applicable law. Thereby memorializes their approval of the Cable Vision Oakland 40 Potash Road, Oakland, New Jersey, to install a rope and associated equipment in the above resolutions located within the municipal right-of-way. We don't really have jurisdiction to not approve it, but they need our permission to do it, and they're in the right-of-way, so we really do have to approve this. So I move the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Abstain.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas the United States of America, the state of New Jersey, the county, and the municipality have become victims of COVID-19 virus and pandemic. And whereas the coronavirus has caused economic damage and hardship to states, counties, and municipalities throughout the United States of America. And whereas on March 27, 2020, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, was signed by President Donald J. Trump. And whereas the CARES Act was enacted, among other purposes, in order to combat the economic damage caused to states, counties, and municipalities because of the coronavirus. And whereas the county has received CARES Act funds from the United States Treasury to be used to reimburse the county municipalities and agencies within the county, including the Township of Nutley, due to economic damage caused to them by the coronavirus. And whereas as the recipient of the stimulus funds, it will be the responsibility of the county to disperse the stimulus funds to eligible recipients in accordance with the terms and provisions of the CARES Act and any guidelines or regulations issued by the United States government or any of its agencies and/or departments. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners and the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Mayor is hereby authorized to execute the attached reimbursement agreement between the County of Essex and the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Whereas sealed bids were received for roofing service and purchase on May 13, 2020, in the Township of Nutley. And whereas Gabriel Roofing Inc., 125 Kensington Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, was the low bidder, with a service per hour rate of $68.80, zero minimum service charge, and prices for material paid by the contractor plus 20%. And whereas the contract term will be for one year from the date of award, with an option to extend for one additional year. Whereas the contract is not to exceed $90,000, and funds are available as follows. $80,000 from ordinance 3425A and $10,000 from account 0-01508200, contingent upon adoption of the 2020 budget, and have been certified by the financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for roofing service and purchase be awarded to Gabriel Roofing Inc. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Abstain.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Thank you. We will now open the meeting to the public.
Would you like me to read the public comment, Mayor?
Please, please, Madam Clerk.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns, please provide your name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
If anyone wishes to, we have a couple of hands up, so let me... Hold on one second. Okay, Ms. Rossi.
Yes. Hello, everyone, and congratulations, Mayor Tucci, on your new appointment. Looking forward to some wonderful changes taking place in town. I have, my first question this evening is, I understand that the township now has a hiring freeze. Is the Board currently considering a salary freeze for township employees?
Ms. Rossi, the hiring freeze is in effect. A salary freeze could very likely be in effect as we get more information, all right, and we find out to what extent there is financial distress in the township, we will take the appropriate action.
Great, thank you. My next question is, what is the exact amount of transition, a transitional made that has been received from the state at this point?
Commissioner Evans, would you like to address that?
Ms. Rossi, are you for this year or on an accumulative basis?
For this year.
It's 85% of the $3,250,000 we got last year, so I don't have the number exactly in front of me, but it's about 2.7, 2.8 million.
Okay, and then are additional funds anticipated? And if so, how much, and when will we know?
We won't know, yes. We anticipate that the remaining 15% that was held back is that that would come later in the year based upon my conversations. The, keep in mind, and we're very sensitive to this as well, given your first question, that we have a commitment from the state. The money is usually transferred to us later in the year in the November, December timeframe. So my expectation is that we will receive that aid because it's directly related to the medical school decision that was made, which we made a number of years ago to allow the school to be there versus another economic driver. So I expect that money to come through. But having said that, and I have no information from the state otherwise, it's not, the money is not in our pocket yet, and that could result in a change later in the year.
Okay, thank you.
Alan.
Okay, next. Mr. Calari? Mr. Calari?
Alan, we just need to name and address when they come on, please.
I know. He's, Mr. Calari, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Hello?
You gotta speak up, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
First of all, I want to congratulate Mayor Tucci and the Commissioners on their election. It was very difficult circumstances that the campaign was run, and just wanted to congratulate you. I did have a question. Commissioner Evans, you stated in the past that you would be implementing zero-based budgeting going forward, and was looking to see, was the 2020 budget implemented using zero-based budgeting?
The full principles of it, no. When you look at zero-based budgeting, one of the guiding principles that we look at is really actually geared to the tax rate. In order to change the tax rate by one penny, either increase the rate by one penny or decrease it by one penny, which is... which is on an annual basis, it's $20 a year to the average taxpayer, we need to identify $325,000 worth of new revenue or identify $325,000 of deductions in cost to achieve that. So for this particular budget, we wanted to achieve a zero impact on the levy, which required us to identify over $2 million worth of cuts or revenue infusions to make that happen. So to this point, we follow more of a model which was around how to keep the levy, the municipal levy, flat. As we look at collections, more aggressive aspects of how we look at the budget will be in order as we move forward, but not yet. I do want to clarify, you know, everyone seems to be saying something about we didn't follow zero-based budgeting principles before. That's erroneous, so let's clear it up. When we did this review, not the past year but the year before, as many of you actually recall, we did not go down to paper clips and pencils. We got close to that. But again, it's guided by what is the requirements we have subject to, for example, our collective bargaining agreements and what are our commitments around that, and what are the statutory requirements of cost that must be in place for every municipality? And then once we got through that, then it was looking at the degree of discretionary spending that was left on the table. And in that particular year, we cut $2.9 million out of the budget in order to achieve that. So to understand the philosophy and the principles fully around zero-based budgeting, the answer to your question would be not... We didn't look at the paper clips. We looked at the things that actually had the ability to move the budget and actually benefit the taxpayers. One last point on that. In order to reduce a taxpayer's tax bill $100, we need to identify $1 million worth of cuts. The size of the cuts in order to create a beneficial interest, regulatory requirements that are in place on every municipality in the state is a very significant undertaking. I'm quite proud of the work that we did. I appreciate the perspective and the criticism that's we have, but I'm proud of the work of this board. And as we go into this next phase, especially given in light of the COVID environment, you can rest assured that we will begin again to take a hard look at our budget.
Mr. Calari, anything else?
Uh, no, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dougherty?
Patricia Dougherty, 387 Hillside Avenue. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the Commissioners on their election. And Mayor Tucci, because there is a pending deadline, I'd like to ask you and the other Commissioners if there's any information or guidance that you can provide about the Patterson-Newark Transit Market Study that is sponsored by the North Jersey Transportation Authority. The current public comment period ends on May 25, and there doesn't seem to be any information on the Essex County website as it pertains to Nutley that would help any resident be able to make a public comment. I did see that Passaic County has the study presentation posted, and it indicates that the potential transit mode of a light rail system using the On3 and Nutley rail right-of-way includes a linked bus route through portions of Nutley residential streets. So I'd like to find out if the township has a position on the Transit Market Study that can guide us for public comments, and also the independent On3 Kensington Street traffic study. Does that take into account any of the proposed modes? And if there is information that indicates the specific residential streets, can you point us in that direction so we can look at them before the deadline?
Yes, Ms. Dougherty, I am not totally up to speed on this transit study. Mayor Scarpelli, are you aware of this?
Mayor, if you remember, we had the county come in and give a little presentation to us on the transit study maybe two or three months ago, where there was actually only two stops in Nutley. One was On3. It's... There was a... There was three options. One was a rapid bus. One was a light rail, and one was a combination of the two. I don't know if you all remember that, but the comment period, there is the comment period, but it's only for the market study to see if it's possible. I don't think the actual route through the township has actually been delineated, although it would seem that would perhaps have to run down Kensington to Washington in order to connect somewhere with the rail system again.
Do you have any suggestions on any thoughts residents might have for the public comment period?
Commissioner?
Dougherty, I mean, I would be concerned about our residential neighborhoods, but there are some advantages to light rail, and there are some disadvantages to light rail. I think maybe we should bring the mayor, we'll make a suggestion, we bring the county back in, maybe to see if there's any update that they have.
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
So at this point, you don't know any specific details of what they're possibly proposing?
I think, I think, Ms. Dougherty, the whole idea is to connect Patterson to Newark, and how they do that through that right-of-way, rail right-of-way that's there. It's just a matter, you know, you gotta remember that that's owned by Norfolk Southern.
Exactly.
They have to approve anything that's happened, so this is just to see if it's a possibility of happening.
Mm-hmm.
I do remember that meeting as well, and I remember that I asked a question of how long and what the timeframe was, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they said about 10 years. You guys recall that? You know, so I think it would be a good idea to call them in, and you know, if you are going to move forward on it, you know, it would be nice if we could get it done before 10 years, too.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There's one more person. There you go. This is under NCC. Please go ahead. Hello? Can you hear us? NCC, can you hear us? No response, Mr. Mayor. There's another person that has raised their hand. I'll go to them now.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. McKelly?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
I am Amy McKelly, 44 Shepherd Place. Congratulations to all the Commissioners, gentlemen. I volunteer for a local nonprofit called Seapaw NJ. We donate pet food through Nutley Family Service Bureau to prevent surrenders and to help people keep their pets. Seapaw NJ volunteers also work with the Bloomfield Animal Shelter, which provides animal control services to Nutley. The outdoor cat population has exploded with the mild winter and spring, particularly with COVID-19 conditions limiting outreach and low-cost vet services. You may know that the most effective way to reduce outdoor cat population is to trap, neuter, vaccinate, and return them to their homes, which is called TNVR. Animal Control refers folks with outdoor cats to Seapaw NJ, and we try to help them. If Nutley would promote this service to its residents, more and more cats and people could be helped, and the outdoor population would be reduced. Even better, if the township, like Bloomfield, would allocate funds to help defray for the fixing and vaccinating of cats, currently at just $55 apiece, so many more cats could be helped. It's preventative and assistive to the cats, to the environment, and to our township. What do you think?
I think this is a topic that falls under Department of Public Affairs. I believe animal control is part of that department. If you would have forwarded us any information through the Township Clerk, we'll be happy to look at it. I'm sure Commissioner Kelly would be happy to look at it, so we could, at that point, make an intelligent decision as to just what we could do, either to promote or possibly support it financially.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. McKelly?
No.
I know, I was just... I was gonna suggest exactly that. Just reach out to either my office or the Township Clerk. You can email me directly at jkelly@nutley.org or commissionerkelly@nutley.org, and if you want to provide me with any information, I'll be happy to take a look at that.
That's great. We're so happy to have you on the Commissioners Board.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
NCC, are you on now?
Yes. Hello, Penny Landry. Yes. Hello.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Penny Landry, former resident, 325 Lakeside Drive. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to all of the Commissioners who were re-elected. I know you all personally through many conversations, and I am looking forward to many great changes for the citizens of Nutley, many of whom are my friends. And particularly you, Mayor Tucci, I wish you great luck in the next two years and look forward to your commitment to transparency. And Commissioner Evans, to you, I'd like to say, after hearing your $100 annual budget speech, I now know it by heart. Y'all take care.
Thank you, Ms. Landry.
Does anyone else wish to raise their hand? Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I don't see any hands up.
All right, that concludes our business this evening. If no one has anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Aye.
That's okay. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Tucci?
Aye.
And the time is now 7:45.
Good night, gentlemen and ladies.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations and good night.
Good night. Thank you.